We're now going to call to order the October 13, 2022 Board of Commissioners Working Session. And our first item of business is a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of September 8, 2022, and I so move.
Second.
The minutes have been -- the motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We are going to -- we are actually going to change the order of the agenda this evening, and we're going to have the budget presentation for Mr. Manfredi, and we will take public comment on the agenda item following the presentation and the discussion from commissioners. So, Mr. Manfredi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Hecker.
Please begin.
Members of the board, and anyone who's taken the time to join us this evening. We are early in the process, and this is a presentation. Obviously, it is the unveiling of the budget. Everyone is seeing this for the first time, thus the term "presentation" of the budget. It is being done in the same manner as we have done this the last six times. This is the sixth time doing it. And I want to begin, as I seem to do, with a quote that is germane to where we are in the process. And the achievements of an organization are the results of the combined effort of each individual. And when I think about what you're going to see in a very brief message from me as we work on this budget, is that that is really the truth, that this organization and the achievements of the organization, and we have achieved some things you'll see in the first slide, truly is the combined effort of each individual, each of you, who have provided the guidance and the ability for my office as township manager, and every employee and every director underneath us, to be able to do what we do, for taking the difficult step you took last year to raise taxes, and you'll see some of the result of it this year. And I say that because it is not easy to increase revenues, and it was very difficult the three previous years to cut expenses. I can tell you, I had many sleepless nights reducing positions, laying people off, as I'm sure all of you have. But the work of every individual, from Jimmy Sheridan, Craig Thane, Angela Pontalandolfo, various people in Public Works that come to work every day, just doing their job to make sure that everything looks right, the landscape crews who make this place beautiful and take pride in their work, to you approving the budget to make it all possible. So I want to say thank you to you as we begin. So the calendar is obviously this evening, is the presentation of this preliminary proposed budget. This will be made available, if not tomorrow, Saturday morning, to everyone to see. And as you know, again, one of the goals of the board and this administration has been to be more transparent, to increase communications. We've continued to do that more and more. And this budget, which is interactive, which was set forth years ago, that this board invested in and gave us the resources to go out and do, will be something that every citizen can log into and see, and for transparency reasons, see the budget. Once the budget's adopted, see financial transactions. We have videos online for everyone to learn how to do it if they're not sure, if they're not comfortable with. Throughout the next few weeks, and on November 10, you'll have in front of you a proposed budget. This preliminary will become proposed depending upon the feedback and the comments that are received. So we actually have the time from October 13 to November 10 is an additional time for the public to be aware of what we're planning and what we're doing. And then after that public comment period, the additional public comment period, it would be in front of you on December 8 for final adoption. So I mentioned the collective work of individuals and what we've accomplished, and I think this is pretty important. So let's begin with saying the tax rate and the millage for fiscal year 2023 will remain the same. This budget that, as presented to you, holds the current total property tax rate at 5.922 mills. General fund revenues and expenditures are balanced. We will not be needing to go into the dollars that are available to us under the fund balance policy. Revenues and expenses are in balance. Waste water and refuse fees will remain unchanged again. The total fiscal year 2023 budget for all operating and capital funds is $70,564,238. Now, keep in mind, there's another $15 million that you're not seeing in this calculation, which would bring the total budget, you'll see it on another summary chart later, to $85 million. We kept that separate because we want to make it clear that that is money that this board has decided wants to go through strategic planning, wants to be thoughtful and determine what's the best way to use those dollars strategically. The general fund totals $44,022,272, and all other operating funds totaling $19,603,104. The general fund permanent improvement capital fund will total $3,599,432. What this plan achieves is it establishes fund equity at an unrestricted fund balance reserve of three months' operating expenditures, a general fund balance available after reserve that meets a generally accepted accounting principle or principles GAAP standard, and exceeds the minimum of two-month Government Finance Officers Association, which is a best practice. We're at three. So what we've done over the last five full years is driven toward this point where revenues and expenses are equal, where the fund balance policy that was designed is robust and full three months, again, meeting government finance officers' best practice. And we've set a table for sound decision-making in what this board wants to achieve in your vision going forward. The approach has been strategic. We began a few years ago with a strategic planning process, had built into the budget how we are going to do things based on the strategic plan and driven by that plan. We had focus areas that were the basis of it. The board continued to move forward with its planning efforts, as well as a strategic vision for how the board wanted to do business. So far, in this redraft of the strategic plan, you have come up with these focus areas: fiscal sustainability, economic growth, sustainable infrastructure, inclusive community, vibrant public space, and excellent public services. It's not finished. As you know, you're still working through the strategic plan, but we are working off of the last strategic plan. And this continuous movement forward as the organization continues to evolve, I suggest people take a look at the focus areas that are currently being considered, not just the captions, but the actual bullet points and what this board is actually trying to accomplish. And when we talk about individuals, you know, people don't realize that commissioners are volunteers and the time they give, and the amount of time the Commissioner Bowles has given to this effort is laudable. And I just wanted to say thank you to him for that. The board has been very strategic in all it's done: the governance, how the board governs, very strategic in how you do business, setting up committees that are very clear, clearly focused to attaining a goal and achieving these different planning efforts, comprehensive plan update of Vision 2035, the stormwater management studying plan, recreation park and open space plan, inclusive park and economic redevelopment plan, and a roadway pavement management program. Even the name roadway was a contribution by certain commissioners because of the focus on making sure that we're making it Abington and making it right and making sense. It's important to understand that all of these plans, all of these efforts, all of this work that has been going on for the last, in some cases, 18 months, to where we are now, to where it will culminate in March, April, May, and June, is all strategic. All the funding has been driven to this point, and this budget has been reflecting that all the time while this effort has been moving forward to build your vision, to grow the township in a responsible manner and deliver services that are excellent. All the time, police hasn't changed, public works hasn't changed, refuse hasn't changed. None of the day-to-day services that the citizens have become accustomed to over the years has decreased. Did we have a burp in the system with COVID, what we had unfortunately to cut back? Yes, we did. But we are back, and that was the point of my showing the achievements that we have and all the individuals, what we've done together to get to where we are. Ms. Harmon's going to get into a lot of the numbers to show what the dollars are, but of course, you know the value of a mill. The total assessed value for 2023, for the first time in a few years, inched up a little bit. You could see that the variance of the total assessed value inched up a little bit. That helps us. That helps us to be able to offset the increase in taxes because the value of every property went up. You know, before we move on, I want to thank someone else. Jay Blumenthal has a team of people, and Carol Thrasher is one of those people who works hard every day. She's another one of those people who contributes, worked with our finance department, and helps us in collecting money and working with us and providing numbers to us so that we can be accurate in all of our projections. And the fact that that department collects 98% of the money is incredible and very critical. And the fact that it stays consistent helps us with our projections. That tax, again, property owner will pay $1 in property tax for every 1,000 of the taxable appraised value of the property. If the Montgomery County assessed value for an Abington Township owner's property were set at $150,000, then $1 of taxes would equal $150. At the proposed tax rate of 5.922, the average taxpayer will pay $888.27 in township property taxes. Again, with this example, if you're at $150,000 at that tax rate, your tax bill to the township will not increase. Tax distribution, as everyone knows, when you look at that $888, you think, my tax bill is certainly a heck of a lot more than that, and it is. 77% of the tax bill is school district, 9% is Montgomery County, and 1% is Montgomery County Community College, and 13% is the township. We have decreased in that pie chart by 1% from 14% last year. And this is just another illustration that shows the tax rate by taxing authority, so you could see where each one is with the dollars on the right-hand side. Again, school district in red, community college at the bottom in yellow, and the county in gray, and we're in blue. And you could see how it leveled off. This is the knowledge tax rate and revenues by levy. And as you know, we have various levies. Some are special levies, some are what I call earmark levies, the library, fire, parks and recreation, and general purpose. As you can see, the total levy will be 5.922. One of the things I want to point out, as we have been taking every step and measure to reduce all of our costs, you know, Director of Engineering and Construction Services, Mr. Clark and their team, we talk about it all the time, about the money we save, hundreds of thousands of dollars, by doing projects in-house, allows us to not have to go into debt, reduces our capital, and we are reducing our debt service, which helps us to apply those dollars to our general operations. This is a recapitulation for the general fund. It shows very clearly the total operating and non-operating revenues, $44,022,702, and the expenditures are in balance. We show a fund balance of $16,877,592. On the right-hand side, you see inter-fund operating transfers and total non-operating expenses are zero. Total non-operating revenues, which is typically the fund balance appropriation, which you see is zero. So what we're saying here, very simply, is the total of all revenues of $60,900,000, and the net fund surplus of $16,877,000 is why we are in that strong position. Mentioned fund balance, fund equity, a number of times, and we talked about this at length last year and the year before with the fund balance policy by making sure dollars were reserved, and we had to dip from three months to two months. And this, and again, this is the summary sheet, this isn't the detail of the policy itself, but it shows how we have to work from that unassigned fund balance or fund equity to consider making sure that there's a reserve at one month, or two months, or three months. And now we're back at that three-months level, that if we needed to, that fiscal year '23 balance available for allocation after reserves is what we're allowed to, but we're not allowed to use the full 5.8. We can only use a percentage of that for fund equity available, that 5.87192, that's $587,000 that we're not using against the fund balance because revenues and expenses are equal. Ms. Harmon? We're going to get into real numbers.
Now, I get to get into all of the granular details of what is happening with this year's budget, some of which Mr. Manfredi has already spoken about. This chart reflects the assessed value he mentioned earlier. It is a steady decline that we've had occurring with the assessment appeal since 2018. However, it did tick up a little bit. That number is as of September 30 of 2022. It could still change by the beginning of the year. There's always a slight change, either up or down, so we will see the actuals in January. This chart is reflecting our revenues versus expenses since 2014. They stay relatively stable. You can see the dip-down for the revenues as related to the pandemic and the expectations we had with business closures and so on and so forth. We are back to pre-pandemic levels with our revenue budgets and our expense budgets, and we were fortunately able to balance the budget, as Mr. Manfredi mentioned previously. And again, as mentioned earlier, I'm going to kind of work my way backwards in this chart, with the American Rescue Plan Act, you can see some of the detail here, and that's in the third segment of this item here. So currently, as you all may remember from last year, we have some positions that we cover with American Rescue Plan Act funds. We intend to continue to do so in 2023 with your approval. In addition to that, we have projects that have been committed and contracted too, and that represents the $4.8 million that you see there, so that those funds will need to be used in 2023 as they continue to be ongoing after designs. And there's been some supply chain issues, as everyone is aware, so just some of those purchases, though they've been committed to and contracted for, we won't receive the product until next year. Leaving a balance of unallocated funds in the American Rescue Plan Act, and those funds will be determined for usage at the, you know, the closure of the strategic plan implementation, as we were discussing previously. To go back to the beginning, at the top there, you can see the general fund had a variance increase of $1.4 million. That's related to personnel costs. As you know, personnel costs make up the majority of our budgets, and they are bound by contracts and agreements. Our debt service for the general, debt service for the 2017 note that we had with the construction projects, though it's not closed out, the general fund portion of that has been, actually will be paid off in November of this year. The only remaining portion will be refuse in 2023. They will have roughly $270,000 that they will be paying down, and then that note will be closed. The fire fund, as you can see there, it looks like it has a decrease of $565,000. What's really occurring here is that the fire fund really is its own fund now, including the capital. It was represented in that way in 2022. So by being able to have the fire capital within the fire fund, they no longer have to have a transfer out to our normal permanent improvement fund. So that represents, that $565,000 represents that decrease. And you can see down here, they did ask for fire capital of $585,000. So as we continue down, some of the other changes are just minor changes related to wages and salaries and items there. We have the capital funds, and we'll get into some more information about the capital funds in a minute. And there will be, the capital and ARPA last year was prepared by spreadsheets. This year, it is in OpenGov, so it will be more interactive. There will still be backup that is spreadsheet-prepared and will be a PDF in the system. If you have any questions when all of this is published, Friday or Saturday, please just let me know, and I'll point out where you can find all of the items that you might want to review. This chart simply represents the major cost centers as we see them by fund. This includes, each one of these totals includes both its capital and its operating cost for those that have both. So you can see sewer operations, that's both the sewer op and the sewer op capital housed there, so it's just a simple representation for easier viewing. And of course, we take that same information and we break it out by function or by department to just, again, make it easier for viewing. We dive down into the revenues, and we get a little bit more granular on these, and this is an interactive chart. This represents many things, and even here, you can see as I hover over each item that you can click on these. And for instance, somebody may ask, what is in other taxes? And you could simply click on this item, and it will tell you what the other taxes represent. And these are important items to see and to note. Mercantile and business privilege. We have been able to fortunately increase our tax revenues both back to pre-pandemic levels and a little bit more, mostly based on increased workforce, increased wage standards, as everybody hears about in the national news with increasing minimum wage requirements and those items there. Get into a little bit of detail here with the different items, just for your information. I don't have to go through all of them. I think they're all self-explanatory. You see a lot of these every year. I just touched on the earned income tax and mercantile and business privilege, that's all related to sales. Inflation, you know, the cost of goods going up increases the sales, and then the taxes for that earned income tax with the re-establishment of all the businesses opening after the pandemic and whatnot. The deed transfer tax with the home sales. Now, we only plan for a modest increase because with the increase in mortgage rates and the shortening supply of homes, we don't expect deed transfer tax to grow as much as it did in 2022. Building permit fees, the same thing, we did increase it, but as a modest increase as related to construction and whatnot, because we expect that to eventually taper off sometime in '23. Pool fees, we did extend the hours of the pools this year at the request of the board. It brought in more memberships for those looking for other timeframes to be there and just a longer season to enjoy the pool. And the Cobra reimbursements, it's just a minor decrease, but this is related to a partnership we have with our health trust. At no cost to the township, they are now handling the Cobra paperwork, which is related to employee separations. They're handling the paperwork and the processing of the payments and the receipt of the payments. Therefore, the township's not receiving those funds directly, and we were not expending them directly either. As we get into expenses, we have several items listed here for your viewing, and we list these again by their various types under the DCD chart of accounts. And I think this one might be a little bit more explanatory. As you can see, based on the collective bargaining agreements and other township agreements, our wages are, as usual, expected to increase, as well as our medical benefits that have gone up a little bit for 2023. Our part-time wages did decrease. Part of that is we had increased the wages during the time that we were short full-time staff. In addition to some other reviews, we were able to cut the part-time budgets overall. And of course, this is all of general fund, so this is every department contributing to decrease the part-time wages by $63,000. The state pension, usually you see a larger number than this. However, our valuation for 1121 saw positive market influences, so we only had a modest increase in our MMO for 2023 of $18,000. Our next valuation is 112023. The markets are volatile, so we'll see what occurs with that valuation and how it impacts the pending MMOs for 2024 and 2025. The township is in review with our pension consultants and our pension actuaries currently on those items. The insurance for property and liability and for workers' comp did increase lately. As you can imagine, with property and liability, there have been a lot of catastrophic losses with tropical storms and hurricanes coming through, so these rates have increased, as well as the cyber insurance, as the industry keeps reducing the number of available insurer companies, as well as the ongoing attacks that they're having, their rates just keep going up. And in order to stay protected, we end up absorbing that cost. The workers' compensation cost went up. Again, they're dealing with the post-pandemic, the Department of Labor and Industry, the post-pandemic rate increases for recovery from the pandemic and the depletion of their funds as related to health costs and health inflation and whatnot. Legal expenses, we are expecting negotiations next year in addition to an increase that we saw this year in legal expenses for various items. So we have increased that budget to capture all of those costs. We all know about gasoline, unfortunately. The gasoline prices keep fluctuating, heading back up, so we do have an increase in the gasoline expense budget there for our vehicles. Machinery, equipment, standard items, it's dependent upon what we need, but it's also dependent on the supply chain and the costs right now. So it is up a little bit by $56,000. Contingency expense, we decided to reduce it. We've had it at $150,000 available for any emergencies that arise or unexpected costs. We have decided to lower that to $100,000, as we haven't had a need to use anywhere near $100,000 in the past several years, as the departments continue to monitor and be careful of their budgets and with the diligent planning that both the board does and the departments do. Contracted services, those just vary based on when contract timing is, but it did decrease a little bit, almost $15,000 for 2023. Mr. Manfredi already mentioned, we are not increasing, don't have a need to increase the residential refuse fees, so they remain the same and have remained the same since 2015. Sewer budget, we also do not need to raise the fees, once again, and that they've been steady for several years now. And now we get into capital fund. So right now, in the capital fund, we have roughly $5.9 million available, and that's listed there at the top. We'll get a little income that's mostly interest income that we receive into the fund. Sometimes there's a sale of a piece of equipment or whatnot as well. So total available for January 1, 2023 ultimately will be $3.8 million, based on how much we expect to spend this year. As I spoke about a few minutes ago, the fire services fund will now house its own capital. Those funds from prior years are currently sitting in the Fund 18 Permanent Improvement Fund, so we will need to move those. We anticipate those being roughly $1.355 million, so that is reflective of this number here. We are able, if you saw the chart earlier with the fund balance policy, if you recall, we are able to transfer in from fund balance, if we all agree, to $3,229,554, plus, again, we'll have a little interest in 2023. So that leaves us an available appropriation amount of $5.7 million. The township manager and the department The township manager and the department directors worked very closely. There were roughly $6 million in requests for capital for the various items everyone would like to accomplish in '23. However, we were able to work it to $3.599 million, and some of those other items might, you know, depending on the outcome of the strategic plan, may become a sample project or a project through those items. That all being said, with the fund balance policy and our budget and where everything stands, we are under the impression that our capital fund budget at the end of 2023 will only be $2.1 million. So we do still have some work to do at the township in finding methods in keeping the capital fund healthy and planning for future years and how we will fund those future projects, aside from the American Rescue Plan Act funding. This is just a more simple chart. There will be much more detail in the online budget book when it goes live, but this reflects what was requested for each fund. We tend to focus on the Capital Projects Fund, which is Fund 18, the $3.599 million that you see there. But there are projects for several of the other funds, as is normal. And those funds do have an appropriate amount of fund balance available to cover those And as we reach down into the American Rescue Plan Act, this looks a little different than it did previously, and it's related to the strategic plan, as we keep talking about. Some of the dollars here listed for 2023 are already committed dollars. For instance, in the general government projects and initiatives, one of the items that's already been committed to of that $6 million is $3.6 million for the HVAC system for the township building. However, we did take the $9.9 million, and we did split it up as sample projects throughout all four of these items, but they can be decided and moved and shuffled because they are not dedicated or committed to any particular project or item at this time. And with that, if you have any thoughts, I'll let you.
Thank you, Jeanette. A few things. We landed on the capital, ARPA. I mentioned earlier, we split it out so that we can highlight the American Recovery Plan Act. All that spending, that $15 million, will ultimately be back in, as you saw in the one sheet, the $85 million. We broke it out this evening because we wanted to highlight, so that everyone understands that those are tranches, that tranche of money that we receive is into, segregated into smaller tranches that will not be line itemed until the strategic plan is completed, and you tell us after discussion what that is to be. Come back to this slide and want to talk about this, because this really is the key to discussions going forward. All the plans have been stormwater. All of these plans are going to generate projects and costs, most likely capital costs. So we are now in a position financially where we have an understanding, a very solid understanding of our general operating expenses, our capital expenses, but how are we going to fund capital into the future? So there are ideas and thoughts and things that we'll be presenting to you for that once we move into your strategic plan phase and how you decide to do that. When we end this, we're going to show an email address and a contact phone number for the public, that when this does go live, since they will have three weeks or so to actually dive into this before we would make any changes, and there that is. I also wanted to let the commissioners, again, as this is, as customary, the first time you're seeing this, I'm sure there are going to be many questions. I will be reaching out to you to make sure that we meet, to talk in greater detail about some of the things that we touched on, but also to answer any questions you have about the details that are in this and some of the things that we're looking at to help accomplish the capital projects and the ARPA projects going forward. So with that, that's the conclusion of the introduction of the budget. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. I'm sure there are. Before opening it up, I'll just say two things to reiterate points that Manager Manfredi made. The dollar amounts that you saw listed up on the screen for the ARPA funding in the different categories are essentially placeholders until we decide what the strategic plan implementation framework is going to look like. But it allows us the flexibility to move those dollars around based on what we deem to be the highest priorities at the end of the process. And secondly, I want to underscore, I think we, as a group, are going to need to have a pretty serious conversation about how we fund capital moving forward. If you look at that, could you put that, that one graph up again? Yeah, I mean, if you look at the balance of the permanent improvement fund, and even if you back out the FIRE Services Fund from that 5.9 number, it gets you down to, you know, 4.5. I mean, basically, next year, we're going to start the year with about $2.3 or $2.4 million less than what we had available this year, and that's a pretty significant hit. So we may need to have a strategic conversation as part of strategic planning about how we're going to ensure that we have an ongoing and sustainable way to fund the capital needs in the township. And with that, I'll open it up for my colleagues. Commissioner DiPlacido.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. So I just, so my request is, could you say that one more time for everybody? There is no tax increase for 2023. Could you say that a little louder, please?
There is no tax increase proposed for 2023.
Thank you so much. Last year was really tough on a lot of us. My other question was, when you mention the word published or go live, does that mean that they'll be available for the public on open.gov?
Correct.
Okay.
Keep in mind, because this isn't the final proposed budget, you know, on November 10, that is the document that gets printed, and that is the document that is available for public inspection for 20 days. This is online. If any, that's why we're directing people to email or contact the finance department with any questions about this. So if they need us to answer them, that we can.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from Commissioner Rothman?
I just want to thank Township Manager and staff for bearing with us during the difficult times last year, dating back through the pandemic and the really tough decisions that we, as a board, had to make, but also that manager had to make in getting us to where we can be now, to still have to deal with budgetary issues that are not, as Commissioner Hecker said, are not going to go away. But to be able to deliver some good news to our residents is what we all strive for every day in serving the public, and we appreciate you hearing what our concerns are to deliver upon what those that we represent want from us. And I think that the services in the township are continuing to increase and improve, and I think that acknowledgement of being top 50 is a testament to all of us up here and to township staff. And I know that we often talk about that. We don't want to piggyback off of each other and keep talking and talking at the end of these meetings, so we have to stay here all night, but it's with heartfelt thanks that I share that, those sentiments to you and all the staff. So thank you. And I know we still have some stuff to look through, and that budget time isn't the easiest time for staff, and you guys are far from done your work, but thank you. It really means a lot to me, and I'm very happy to be able to share this information with my residents.
Thank you. Now, we'll pass that down the line.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Any further comments from members here in the room? Can we pull the presentation down just to see if there's any commissioners on Zoom that want to speak? Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you very much, President Hecker. I will just be very brief. Sitting in that chair a year ago, or on Zoom, or wherever we were, during that extraordinarily difficult budget process, I marvel at, just as then, but especially now with no tax increase, the work of Director Herman, her entire department, you know, all of the township directors and township staff, and this is certainly a testament to the excellent, reliable, steady leadership of Manager Manfredi, and frankly, of our board leadership. So you and Vice President Vehe and Commissioner Schreiber and everybody. So thank you. That's all from me.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Any further comments or questions before we open it up for public comment? Okay, we will. Thank you, Manager Manfredi.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the room that wishes to speak? Please come forward. Again, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Sure, I'm Deb Burns. I live, 1953, Guernsey Avenue, Abingdon, Pennsylvania. I just have a couple of questions here, because I teach accounting, so, but I'm always dealing with the school, because I'm on a strategic committee at my school district. I have a question. Who was on the strategic committee for the township? Are there, who were the stakeholders that are involved in that process? I'm just asking a question. Somebody help me out here.
We have a subset of the board, which is the Strategic Planning Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Bowles. And then there is a process that will be underway between now and the early part of next year that will have public engagement and engagement of all relevant stakeholders.
But do you have, like, I just know our strategic planning is the school board, the community, the teachers, the administration. I'm just asking a question here, because I'm trying to compare it, and I know it's a little bit different.
The membership of the committee is solely the commissioners?
Small, so that was my question.
Larger engagement with all key stakeholders is part of the process.
No, that was my question, because I was like comparing it from what I know differently. So I was like, okay, who's part of the strategic committee? My next question is, I saw a lot of the capital. I was looking for the operating. Did I miss that in the presentation, like the operating?
The operating budget was the $40 million.
That was the $40 million?
Yeah, we call that the general fund.
General fund? Okay, so I was looking at the operating thing. Okay. I have two questions. Like I said, I wanted to know more of the general, that it really wasn't real specific. Like I said, like how is the, I know there was a question about like traffic and how do we get the residents of, you know, this street to be, what can we do to do that? But my other concern is, I have three children, actually five granddaughters, five daughters, three stepchildren, three of my daughters live in the township, six grandkids. I am looking at the parks and recreation and some of the fees that are half-days. If you have a single parent that want to put three of their children in a week program, some of the cost is $85 for a half-day. You multiply that by three. When I look at what Upper Dublin does, or Toulonham, even the poor district that I work in, the fees here for what you're getting is astronomical. Like, I would like to see the parks and recreation. Like, when I look at Upper Dublin, where you could have a full-week program, different things like 200, and compared to what we have, we don't have it. Even like if I go to, you know, have her go to, I had three kids, grandchildren, who wanted to go to something, it was $85 per kid. You're a single parent making $45,000. That's not happening. I would like to look at the cost of the parks and wrecks and the fees because of the lower income, families who really would like to be part of that, that just can't afford it. My other thing was, you guys are doing a really good job, and I know it's difficult, and you're getting a hard time for many of us. I have to say thank you, but I remember, for the last two years, a lot of people, I know you're keeping it at no increase, but a lot of people are seeing that inflation. You're seeing the elderly. You're seeing, honestly, I was just given a freeze for the next three years. I am not getting an increase. So understand that, yes, there are increases, but you do have families here that are not going to get increases, and they're struggling. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you for your perspective and your suggestion. Vice President Vehe.
Ma'am, I just want to let you know, we're in the process of a conference and plan for our parks and recreation, and our first public meeting will be in this room on the 19th, which is next Wednesday. I welcome you to come. I think it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents in the room? Then we'll turn to Zoom.
Mike Tobin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, Mike Tobin, Kirkwood. Just a quick question. Will we see any revenue, assuming the Basil's Toll Brothers goes through, will we see any revenue from that over the next 24 months that would go into the general fund or whatever? Or is that, you know, do we have to just wait till it's all constructed and that would be tax revenue? Thank you.
Go ahead, Manager Manfredi.
There will actually be, God bless you, there will actually be, at each phase of revenue stream, there will be a revenue stream from the permitting phase, and then, once the project is completed, when you see in the chart the total assessed value, thank you, with the value, the total assessed value of that property being increased, that will actually benefit the tax base in its entirety. So when we're calculating the millage rate based on the total assessed value and calculation, that in and of itself benefits us financially on top of the property taxes that will be paid by those people living there. So within the first 24 months, depending upon when that property actually turns over, the development gets turned over, and there'll be a slight increase in fees, but we really won't see that increase until the project is turned over.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi.
Ms. Simon, you're on.
Madam Brooke, and I want to just say quickly that the variance approved at Nifty 50s did not meet the rules for approving variances. Neither did any of the residents that we can find receive notification, and they all were supposed to. That needs to be dealt with, and you should not be approving something that was done in that manner. DCED has the scoop on that, and you really cannot do that. The other thing, Mr. Thompson sat quiet while Mr. Manfredi or Mr. Hecker said that nobody had mentioned that Zoom was going. Commissioner Thompson, you actually did have that conversation with Mr. Narco which in a meeting.
Commissioner Thompson is not present this evening.
Okay, so, all right, then that's why he sat quiet. So that did happen, okay? So there was discussion that everybody would be resuming to Zoom, to in-person, and at the same time, there was a planning commission meeting that was not held on Zoom, which never should have happened. So I, you know, certainly without notice to the community and an opportunity for the input that you had tonight, so please take what you had tonight seriously. For some of us, it's a matter of life and death. So the other things I'd like to discuss on the budget is, I do not understand why you did not give us the budget documents. Number one, those, the print on the documents on my screen are so tiny, there's almost nothing there that could be read, and there's no way for us to be prepared. It was not transparent at all to withhold that information. The residents need that information in order to be cogent in their comments to you and their questions, and to ask you what they need and what they want. Our input was nowhere in sight in the process of this thing, putting it all together. And in years past, we had many opportunities for public input, to suggest things, and to weigh some of the things that you were doing. Instead, we're presented with a finished budget, no documents, and then one meeting before the meeting where it's finalized. That's not acceptable. That is a disservice to these residents. And, you know, Mr. Manfredi was the manager in Warmminster, and everybody praised him for giving the budget online, and he gave them a plan, a strategic plan for moving forward, and just a few years later, they were in bankruptcy. So we need to do that kind of re- So we need to do that kind of research to understand where we need to pay attention to what's going on. And what's going on is to take this into an 856-page budget, where most of it is garbage that doesn't, I don't know how many pages it is this year, obviously, because I haven't seen it. But prior to that, that was one of our concerns. Has it been addressed? Has the tiny print been addressed? Clearly, it has not. Do we have the ability to print out a hard copy? I've asked that question. I asked it last year, I asked it in between, and I still have no answer. We need a hard copy. You cannot go quickly through a document when you have to stop and open every link and wonder if what's behind it is what you're looking for. In a hard copy, you can sail down the pages quickly and literally work expediently with that document. I am asking for that for the residents of this township. We work together on it. There's only a handful of us that even knows the budget, and I don't think anybody's read the budget over the years as I have since 2006. So I know the difference between a good budget and a budget that's designed to hide things from people. So with the $4 million that we are ahead on, we just had a $21 million infusion, $3 million raising our taxes, and $19 million that came from ARPA funds. So for us to have an increase of $4 million and look like we're inching up in our assessment, that's like the old joke about how to make a million dollars.
Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments. You've come to your five-minute limit.
Yeah, start with $2 million, and that's how you get $1 million. So if we had $21 million infused, why would we only be up $4 million in the overall assessment of our township? That doesn't make any sense, and I would like to have that explained tonight, okay? And the same thing, like, you decrease the park numbers by $63,000, but you're adding consultants, just the parks consultant alone was $70-some thousand.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman. Mr. Manfredi, is that first question, is it something that you can speak to, or about the $4 million? And if not, we'll...
With all due respect, I did not understand what she was talking about.
Okay, we'll work to get clarity so that we can answer that question. With that, I do not see any other hands.
I have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
And, I know I have to mark the question.
No, you already did. You did use your full time.
On the general budget, does, I know it gave a normal, or it gave a total, is there a category that lists the, what is included in the general budget?
Yes. When Mr. Manfredi publishes the link to the budget tomorrow, it'll be interactive, you'll be able to go through and see all of that.
Okay, now, this is not anything really pertaining to the budget, but I do have a question, and I missed it last time. Just the past minutes you were approving, where are the past budget, past minutes published? Because I didn't see any out here, like, a paper one, so that was my, just a general question.
We can show you where the page is on the township website where that material is available.
Okay, I just thought it would be available here. That was my only question. Did I miss something?
We're trying to reduce paper usage, which is why we've moved more to digital.
No, that's fine. Just asking.
Thank you. With no further comments, we are adjourned.